Run just a little bit late. This is a roll call note that this meeting will be recorded. Renee, you want to do the roll call?
Amy Donahue.
Here.
Kendra Foley.
Here.
Eileen Schubalzer.
Here.
Lindsay Moska.
Here.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Here.
Mark Sedaris.
John Ports.
Present. First item on the agenda is the high school advisors. Welcome.
Um.
Your uniform.
I was about to say, we're just apologizing for how we look. We're going straight to lacrosse practice. That explains that. And then we just have some like updates on senior year. I think today marks like we have 38 days left. Someone's counting. So we're definitely starting to think about like the future more than ever. And we have our like scholarship packets due on April 12th. So that's like a really important deadline.
There's only around like a month left until people are like choosing their schools. Like this weekend, I know a lot of people in our grade shows like where they're going next year. And a lot of people are still visiting and like seeing what the best fit for them is.
And then surrounding like prom and junior crews, we had like our mandatory presentation on March 19th. And we heard from this woman who had like lost her twin sister in a car accident. And it was like a really moving. It definitely wasn't like negative or like really sad. It was more like positive and like how we can like kind of affect our future. It was really good.
Another thing we had was the pride committee threw an event to crown this year's Mr. W H S, who was Luke Murphy. And it is an annual event that allows boys to sign up and show off like a talent portion, their casual wear. And they like answer questions and stuff. And a lot of friends and family came out and supported. So that's always something fun.
And then Banderama 2019. We didn't attend, but we heard it was a success and it just like brought together all age levels of music in Watertown. So that's really cool.
Another thing was Speak Week, which was March 18th to the 22nd. And it was a really powerful week at W H S where several workshops and exercises were held so that it could bring more understanding about mental health and allow people to learn more about themselves and how it affects others too.
And so then just a little bit about spring sports. So like winter sports came to an end, I think right about the last time we were here. And I think boys basketball and hockey were the two teams that made it the furthest in the tournament. But now we have like tennis track, baseball, softball, and lacrosse, all off to a great start. We're both on the girls lacrosse team. And no one stepped up to coach. So we actually have the athletic director, Ryan Murphy, as our coach. And it's been really fun so far. And like a lot of like different people have volunteered to help out. So we're really appreciative of that.
Another thing that's coming up this weekend is the a cappella band Strings and Chorus students are taking a trip to New York. And they are going to perform there. And I hear that every year it's super fun and we expect them to do well while they're there.
That's all. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Don't want to keep you from practice. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next item is the public forum. We have a public forum now and then we also have a public forum at the end, towards the end of the meeting. Anyone like to speak in public forum? Okay. Let me do a move up of a couple of items here. If there's no objection from the committee in front of the public hearing, we have an operating budget public hearing. But before we do that, let's do the teaching and learning showcase. And this is the One Step Forwards, a middle school leadership program. And Amy's involved with that. And I'll ask her to do the introductions.
Okay. Well, I'm going to let them introduce themselves. And I'm also going to let them explain what this group is about. But before they go up there, I just want to commend them for their efforts this year so far and all the work they've done. And I know that in the future, you guys are going to be great at the high school next year in bringing this group up there. And I can see really good things coming from this group of girls and possibly boys that were going to join the group. And so take it away.
Hi, my name is Bridget Donahue.
I'm Teagan Murphy.
My name is Brianna Cooper.
I'm Cece Neelis.
I'm Katerina Lithotomos.
And I'm Anya Durein, the faculty leader of our group, One Step Forward.
Unfortunately, two of our members, Aliq H. and Laura H., couldn't make it tonight.
So One Step Forward is our student-led group that we started to help raise awareness about addiction and to provide clothing and backpacks to the homeless patients at the Mass General Hospital Substance Use Disorder Bridge Clinic.
In our first efforts to begin One Step Forward, we collected clothes and other items to help homeless patients who are cared for at the Bridge Clinic. We did this by organizing a holiday winter ugly sweater party. And we asked our other eighth grade students to bring new cold winter items for homeless adults in need, such as backpacks, new socks, mittens, knit hats, hand warmers, or scarves. Some people even brought winter jackets. And the items we collected were delivered to the Mass General Hospital Substance Use Disorder Bridge Clinic to give to their patients.
After this, we asked middle school teachers, Chris McDermott and Anya Durein, who lead the W M S community service groups, to guide us on how to expand our fundraising and awareness efforts and educate ourselves on more about addiction. We met with Watertown Lieutenant Dan Unworth and Watertown Police Department Dr. Laura Keough, addiction specialist with medical director in Mass General Hospital Bridge Clinic, and Peter Asian, founder of Watertown Overcoming Addiction. They all volunteer at the Watertown Opioid Task Force and Regular Due Community Awareness Program together. Also, my mom, Amy Donahue, a school committee member, who helped us organize the group and our efforts.
In January of this year, with the generous support of Watertown Middle School P T O, we were able to attend the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association and Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth co-sponsored ULEAD conference, which talks more about leadership, healthy relationships, violence prevention, and substance use prevention. Ms. Anya attended with us.
Also, recently, several of us chose to attend the Well Being of Watertown Youth Meeting at the Watertown Public Library, where we met the Watertown High School peer leaders and other community members. We broke out into working into groups to discuss various topics related to the Watertown youth, including substance use and mental health. We are excited about bringing our group into the high school and next year and joining forces with the peer leaders to expand our efforts and hopefully become peer leaders.
In the future, we hope that we can expand our program throughout the Watertown schools. We want to help those in need through donations. And we also hope that our group will raise awareness about addiction and decrease stigma about it for anyone who may be or may have family members experiencing addiction.
We want to start accepting donations as soon as possible. For this to happen, we need to establish a drop-off point for the donations. And we thought that a large, like bright colored and labeled collection box right outside the middle school would be a good place because it's passed regularly by students and faculty. We hope to collect clothing and backpacks through the seasons as needs change and weather changes.
In the future, moving forward, as this group finishes off at the middle school and goes on to the high school, we hope to get the support from the school committee members as well as all the schools. This is all them. I'm just, I'm just here as a leader. This is all them. And I'm really proud of them. And thank you for having us today.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment to say, I want to echo what Amy said. Congratulations for all of your hard work. And I did have an opportunity over the years to work with Wayside and the peer leaders at the high school. And I think it's a great program that you should take advantage of. And it would be very helpful for yourselves as well as some of the other kids at the high school. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that too. I think Amy mentioned that a number of the peer leaders at the high school are graduating, or seniors are graduating now. It's a great program. As Mark says, my daughter was involved with it when she was in the high school. Hopefully, you can kind of bring a new energy into it. If you have people graduating out, you can bring kind of the new group in. So that's great.
I want to also thank Donna Martin for supporting this when we brought this to her back several months ago. And she was right on board to support it. So that's also thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
One other item to, excuse me, to bring up on the agenda would be the field trip. And so we have before us the Camp Sunshine, which we see every year, I think. I don't know whether someone wants to introduce from this end or just go straight to the.
I think it's best if they would like to present.
Okay. So in our packets, we had a one, couple-page request form about it, so.
Oh, okay. Well, these are two students from the seniors here that have come. Chris was able to come twice and Shannon came in February. So if you guys want to talk about Camp Sunshine?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Chris Carrigan. I'm a senior at Watertown High. I got to go my junior and senior year to Camp Sunshine. Luckily, I got to put on a dress and a tutu, dance in front of all the little kids on stage. For those who are unaware what Camp Sunshine is, it's a kids camp for those who are terminally ill. And we went up, no, what week was it? Oncology. We went up during oncology week. And all the little kids are just such amazing little balls of fire. Like you're so tired at the end of the day. But I've never had a five-day week that was more worth it in my life. And I lifeguarded the whole time. I was tired. It was hot in the pool, but I had a smile on my face the whole time. I won a couple dance-offs. I had a push-up contest. It was super stressful. That eight-year-old had some arms on him. It was really, almost beat me there. It was pretty embarrassing.
So along with Camp Sunshine, some of the activities that they do are not always pleasant. Unfortunately, Shannon was stuck in the kitchen. So having to serve food, so she wasn't able to basically be with the kids a lot like most of the kids are. Some of them have to work in the activity window. So it's not, all of them get to go out and volunteer with the kids is really jobs that they work from the time they get up to literally till 10 o'clock at night. Shannon unfortunately had to work, get up at five, which she's not used to. Do you want to tell what you did in the kitchen?
Yeah. So I cleaned everything. I was inside those freezing fridges and cleaning everything. I cleaned the tables. I handed out food, dessert, drinks, whatever they wanted, I gave them.
Having to follow a lot of rules. Situatory rules and everything, correct? Yep. So for those that don't, along with the kids, the parents, parents are a huge part of Camp Sunshine because we do not transport. Usually, we have two to three parents. Miss Carrigan's car was able to carry four or five kids, which was nice. So they transport out. And then when it's time to come back, they also drive all the way up there, which is a two-and-a-half-hour ride, to pick them up and to bring them back home. So without the parents, it wouldn't happen either. It's awesome. Kudos to them.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions or yes?
I have a comment. I love this program. I think it's phenomenal. I mean, and regardless of kitchen work or actually dancing on stage in a tutu, you're making a huge difference to kids who are having a struggle and who are obviously in need of some, whether it's Coke or, you know, a dietary thing, or whether it's watching a teenager dance in a tutu. I mean, how cool would that be if you're struggling? I mean, imagine the smiles on their faces from that. So even if you're not doing the fun part, if you're doing the grunt work, you're making a difference to kids. And I just thank you to everybody who participates. Thank you to you guys for running it. I think it's a phenomenal program. I'm so grateful that Watertown gets to be a part of it. So thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Do the same students get to go both times?
They don't. So it's twice. Truthfully, it's really hard for us because we're only allowed to take 10 kids. In October, we got 32 applicants to go. In last February, we would have got more because a lot of the parents go away with their kids. We got 29 kids. So we ended up having to cut them down. And it's hard because.
It's like first period, they come in and they're like.
Is it 10 because of the transportation issue or is it 10 because that's all they can?
That's all Camp Sunshine will give us. There's also a couple of other schools that go up there at the same time. There's St. John. So they don't want that many younger kids, so they only allow two schools at one time along with the other volunteers. I mean, volunteers come from all over. I mean, the week we go there, there's two from California that fly in every year.
That's one.
That's from Pennsylvania.
We're a favorite. We're a favorite up there.
Yes.
Like they love us up there.
They love Watertown up there. They don't even think twice of having us come back.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we'll go back to item four, which is the public hearing on the fiscal year 20 operating budget. So this is kind of one of the last, well, I won't say the last step. This is kind of an interim step, if you will, in the budget process. We, just by way of background, we've had, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee has met at least four times to go through various parts of the budget. The superintendent has presented, kind of as we go along, has presented information about the budget. So this is the formal public hearing required by state law, public hearing on the budget. We will meet again briefly on Thursday to vote the budget. And then at that point, after we have voted the budget, the budget will go as a recommended document to the town manager, which will then put it in with the rest of the town budgets and goes to the town council. And we will do a presentation to the town council at a date to be selected. And then the town council will do a final vote. So it's still several steps left in it. But let me turn it over to the superintendent. And then so this is the public hearing. So people have an opportunity to ask any questions they want at the end of the presentation.
Thank you very much. So we're very excited this evening to present our school department recommended budget for fiscal year 2020. As has been the case over the last several times that we've discussed the budget, this year, we were very focused on grounding our requests to our mission, which is to prepare all students for life by engaging them in a challenging and meaningful education within an inclusive, diverse community. And that would support our vision, which is inspiring excellence for all. We inspire all to explore and shape the world around them. And then certainly adhering to our core values of equity, excellence, and community. So throughout the budget process, hopefully, you'll be able to see that what it is that we've done in terms of our budget certainly supports our mission, vision, and our core values. One of the things that we did as a district last year and then spent this year making sure that we implemented it was to determine a district improvement strategy. And that strategy was driven by four strategic objectives. The first one is around equity. The second one is around excellence. The third one is around community. And the fourth one is about building our educationally appropriate joyful learning environments, otherwise known as building for the future. So again, this is the grounding work that we did in terms of creating this budget. And I do believe that throughout, you'll see elements of how it is that we're supporting these. I wanted to just frame a couple of, we could present myriad data points about our students. But I also, I just wanted to highlight a few things about our W H S 2018 graduates. It would be nice if I could tell you about the 2019 graduates, but we're not there yet. So just a little recap from 2018. In terms of our advanced placement scores, we have advanced placement scholars. Last year, we had five AP scholars who had a three on, you can get, it's a one through five scale. They received a three on at least three of their exams. We had five AP scholars with honors who had an average of 3.25 on four exams, at least four exams. We had nine AP scholars with distinction, which means that they got an average of 3.5 on at least five exams. And then we had one national AP scholar who received fours on all of the exams that this person took, and they had to take at least eight. So it's pretty impressive in terms of what our students did in the class of 2018. We had two national merit letters of commendation, which we celebrated in the beginning of the year. In terms of the ADAM scholarship, this is something that I hope that all parents are aware of. The ADAM scholarship provides tuition for any of the University of Massachusetts schools, whether they're the state colleges or the University of Massachusetts colleges. We had 45 students that qualified for the ADAM scholarship. Now, what that is, either you, on the three MCAS exams in high school, you receive advanced on one of them and proficient on the other two. Or you could have advanced on all three. It doesn't really matter. But the point is, you have to have at least one with advanced and two at proficient and be in the top 25% of the cohorts for the state. We actually exceeded that 25% number. We had 28% of our students receive the ADAM scholarship. This is an excellent benefit for families, and it's great to see so many of our students in Watertown achieving that benchmark. And then overall, we had 93% of our students attending two- or four-year colleges or a technical vocational program after graduation. So my point in talking about this is that our students throughout their 13 years in the Watertown Public Schools have excellent outcomes as they exit the system. So you'll never be able to see this. But I did want to just point out, and this is, this will be publicly available, oh, the places they'll go, this is from the class of 2018. This represents all of the colleges that our students were accepted to. It doesn't necessarily mean that they went there. It simply means that they were accepted. Oftentimes, students will be accepted at many, many colleges, but they make their decisions based upon location and financial aid. So that final list is much smaller, but I think it's impressive to see just all the places that our children were accepted. So in terms of our, I'd like to just talk about some of our accomplishments as a district. In the FY 19 season, we developed our district improvement strategy. We enhanced the use of technology in terms of our administrative tasks. We completed the eligibility module for the MSBA, which is very exciting for our high school. We achieved later start times at Watertown Middle School and Watertown High School. This was all, that definitely had a budgetary implication. We redesigned the district website. And then we had successful hiring of several key administrative positions, some of which are sitting at this table, such as Heidi Perkins. And Donna Martin here was early, was here earlier. Certainly, we had Ryan Murphy. We've talked about many of those good hires that we had throughout this year. We've had many, many accomplishments in our teaching and learning. We have the universal administration of the PSATs. We've been curriculum mapping using Atlas. That's K through 12. It's a multi-year process, but we certainly got started. We provided deep professional development for inclusion and co-teaching. The district leadership team conducted monthly learning walks. And then elementary and secondary, certainly, we've had a lot of great success in terms of implementing Reader's Workshop at the elementary level, using data to drive instruction. We implemented iReady. We started our. using data to drive instruction. We implemented iReady. We started our coaching cycles at the elementary level. This is just a sampling of some of the great work that we've done at the elementary and the secondary level. Standard space report cards, for example, that was another big thing that we did. I feel very proud of the work that Teresa and her team has done over the past several years, but certainly this past year has been very exciting in terms of strengthening our teaching and learning. And with that came a lot of deep professional development across K through 12. We have implemented the new social emotional learning programs at the K to five, and we're moving forward in terms of six to 12. We are going to be planning our high school standards. We did our elementary standard space report card implementation, aligning our progress reports, understanding by design, differentiated instruction, certainly Teaching and Learning Alliance for Literacy. We continued with our math in terms of our coaching and our math leaders and those coaching cycles as well. So our professional development is ongoing, but it is certainly something that we consider to be the core of moving forward with our district improvement strategy. One other thing before we start actually talking about the budget, I think it's always good to know where our enrollment stands. Currently, you know, we had a very large kindergarten year. We're not anticipating it being quite so large next year, but we have a pretty big bubble in K one and two moving forward, so that will certainly have a little bit of an impact as we roll through the years. But just in general, we are at 2,608 students currently in our schools. In terms of the demographics, the only thing I wanted to point out here that I think makes a difference, which I mentioned at the last time we met, is now our English language learners has hit the threshold of, it's over 12%, so we are considered a high incidence school district. And you'll see later on that that's reflected in some of the allocations that we have in our budget. So that is one significant change that we have in our demographics. And then this is just a brief snapshot of our enrollment projections. You'll see that there is definitely a trajectory up. It's not dramatic, but certainly we are creeping up in our enrollment. And that is something that every year when we do the budget, we are constantly looking at making sure that we're following our class line, class size guidelines. And this also played a very important role when we considered our elementary school building projects and our high school project as well. So knowing that we do have, we will be experiencing a slight uptick in our population over the next 10 years. We talked a little bit about the budget calendar already, but this is not something that we just started. We actually began back in September. I'd like to thank Heidi Perkins for all of the work that she and her team put in putting together this budget, and that work began back in September.
Excuse me.
Bless you. In December, you guys actually met five times as a subcommittee. December is when we set our budget goals. And then moving forward in January, one of the biggest moments for us as a team was we brought our entire leadership team of 32 people in together to look at the requests that the principals and the budget owners had made to put forth what we consider to be the district priorities. And that was something that was done as a team, not done in isolation. Then we began the work with the subcommittee in terms of looking at the level services budget and then looking at the requests and having presentations from all of our principals and our directors in terms of what it is that their goals were for FY20. And here we are this evening for the public hearing, and then we will move forward, as was already highlighted, with the vote on Thursday and then moving forward with the presentation to the town manager and then the town council. In terms of the guidance that we received, we were looking to meet a 5% increase to our budget. And right now, you know, we are pleased to say that that is what we have, we are providing you with this evening. So the 5% guidance provided us with a budget of $50,441,424. In terms of the level services budget, that pretty much actually took up the 5% increase almost fully. The level services budget was $50,203,717. That left us with a very small delta of $237,707 in terms of looking at new requests in addition to our level services budget. I would also like to say that a lot of attention was given to the level services budget. We approached it a little bit different, which I'm going to talk about in two seconds, in terms of making sure that that included increases in enrollment, you know, making sure that our staffing levels were appropriate. So, you know, that left a very small delta for new requests, and we'll be going over those shortly. But it is important to note that almost 90% of that 5% total increase goes to level services. So there really was not much left for additional requests. So this breaks down our recommended budgets. Now this is net of budgeted offsets. Not to go into a deep dive into this, but we have approximately $4 million of offsets. So to actually operate the school budget is more akin to $54 million, a little over that. But we use offsets through grants or revolving funds to help augment our budget. But the $50,441,424 is the appropriation from the town in terms of running the schools. So this is just broken down by several areas of the budget. This is just a representation of our budget allocation by cost center, whether it's regular day or student services, which obviously take up the largest amount of the budgets. And then technology, facilities, district administration, district curriculum, athletics, and extracurriculars make up the full pie chart. In terms of budget drivers, I think it's really important, this was, these budget drivers were all incorporated into the level services budget, which is why that budget took up that 90.9%. We have to add this year three elementary teachers due to anticipated increases in enrollment and as required per the class size guidelines. We know that we're going to increase one grade five teacher at the Cuniff, one grade three teacher at the Hosmer, and one grade two teacher at the Lowell, which are each budgeted approximately $64,000. If there's any change in terms of enrollment, we may shift, but we do know that we need three full new positions in this budget. We thought at one time that we would need four, but based upon the kindergarten numbers, we thought we might need an extra kindergarten teacher at the Cuniff, but we did go down to three based on our early figures for registration. We are increasing a humanities teacher to 1.0 at the middle school. It's an enrollment bubble, but it also is reflective of the ESL population because currently we have a teacher who's an ESL teacher who's picking up one of our ELA classes. And so that teacher who's supposed to be teaching the humanities block will now go to full-time, so we can devote all of the FTE to the ESL population at the middle school. Similarly, we're increasing our world language teacher from .5 to .8 at the middle school. This is due enrollment and also the need to, what we're finding is more and more of our students coming out of elementary. Right now in sixth grade, students either take reading or world language. And we're finding that more students actually are ready to take world language, so we want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all the kids of what they need. So having that increase will certainly be better suited for our sixth grade students coming in. We're also increasing an ESL teacher at the Hosmer to, right now it's currently a .5 position. We would increase that to a full-time position. We're right now looking at numbers at the high school and the Hosmer to make sure we know what's the best place to, where to allocate that resource, but we need the extra .5 FTE to meet the needs of our ESL programming. We did have some salary savings, which you'll see in the FY20 budget, which we think of drivers both as favorable or as a liability. We did have a little bit of an overbudgeting of two teachers in our FY19 budget, so that helped to be able to fund the priorities that we have within this budget. And also, we had five special education aides that were budgeted in FY19 that were not filled due to students either moving out of the district or being outplaced. So that was one other thing that we had in terms of budget drivers, which saved us, you know, almost $300,000. So the other variance from those, what I just talked about, the two positions that were budgeted that we did not fill, plus the five aides, we did move forward, if you remember, as a school committee, we voted in this fiscal year to add two door monitors slash security officers at the high school and the middle school. We increased the teacher of the visually impaired posting from, actually it's .4 FTE to one. And then we are in the process of posting and hiring seven part-time kindergarten aides, which will certainly help our kindergarten program. And then we had to add three lunch aides at the middle school in terms of not having the teachers to be able to cover the lunchtime. So we did offer, we added those earlier in the year. So those are built into the budget for FY20. One of the largest drivers for FY20 is a $468,000 increase in Minuteman tuition. This is due to three different factors. One is that the tuition actually increased for Minuteman. That's the base tuition for all students. We have to pay a capital fee now for the new building that's being built, will be built and opened in the beginning of September of 2019. That capital fee is $6,202 per student. And then an additional $1,100 of an increase for special education students that attend Minuteman. So we know that that increase is $468,000. And then last but not least, as you know, we are in the process of procuring our multi-function student activity buses. We went to a three-year lease option to own, so, you know, soon we'll be done with year one. This is to cover year two and then year three as well, but that will drop off once we're out of FY21. So this just breaks it out. I have just two slides. One breaks out our FY20 budget by salary in terms of salaries that we're paying. You'll see some shifts. I know there were some questions earlier about regular day and student services. The variance in there, as I just mentioned, we actually had two teachers that were coded for special education, but they were regular days. So that's just an internal transfer that we did. We have the five instructional assistants that weren't filled, and now they're being filled by kindergarten aides, which are in regular day. So if you see, the numbers are pretty much the same. It's just moving from the student services into regular day.
Can you just address the 72% change?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I absolutely can do that too. Yep. So in the district line, right now we are in the process of working with our unions in terms of negotiations. So we don't yet have the actual salaries figured out for FY20. So certainly we anticipate that there will be some adjustments for salary, and so we have to budget for that. But that number right there is more than just that. It's also non-aligned staff in terms of cost of living adjustments. It might be lane changes. Oftentimes, we don't know when teachers move from, you know, a masters plus 15 to a masters to plus 30. You know, there's certain things that we are not completely sure at this point in time, so we've set it aside in anticipation of where we settle with not just the union contracts, but all of the variations within that. So that's why that's higher than it normally ever would be. In the future, you'll see those, that number will be spread out throughout the salaries in the budget. Thank you. And then this is the non-salary expense budget. It shows you some of the increases, decreases throughout. And then the actual, so we talked about the fact that there was a very small delta of about $237,000. So this is what we worked together as a team to figure out what it is that we wanted to use that delta with and if there were any reallocations that we could have in order to meet some of the priorities that we had set forth. So in terms of funded priorities, we have the increase of two middle school instructional coaches. We, so that will be one for humanities and one for math and science. We have responsive classroom training, which is ongoing for our staff. We did have a reduction at the Lowell Elementary School of a special education teacher due to not having that need as much. You'll see that we have an add a little bit later. We looked at what the need might be, and what we determined is that a social worker for our ISP program was what we wanted to move that allocation to, and it's not just for the Lowell, but for the middle school as well. We are adding to our FLESS program, so we certainly have to increase our elementary Spanish teaching by .5 as we roll up into third grade. As you remember, it's a multi-year rollout. Right now, we're in K one and two, and next year we'll be in grade three, so we need that .5 teacher to make that happen. And then we have an increase in elementary technology, and this is above and beyond, which is in the level services budget. Every building has a technology allocation, but this will help to support some of our online instruction, especially at the younger grades with iPads, but also interactive projectors and other technology that will enhance learning. And then the last funded priority would be a $50,000 allotment for curriculum revision cycle. What that would do is, you know, we would have a set aside every year for a particular content area to be guaranteed, to be able to refresh their resources. This is something that schools just struggle with often. We come with new standards or we revise our curriculum, but if we don't have the funding to replace the resources, then it makes it very challenging. So we're very excited to have that allocation in there as well. So this is just an overview of the budget by object code. And this is something that on Thursday night, the school committee will be actually voting the budget by object code, so this is important. And then the slide here just, and again, it's small, I, you know, if you're watching this out in the public. This is just a comparison of, there's two ways that we compare districts. One is by a system called DART, which looks at similar districts across the Commonwealth, as well as we pulled in our neighboring districts such as Cambridge and Waltham and Belmont, just to give people a snapshot of our spending in comparison to others. There's a couple of, I mean, I don't want to use the word drivers, but there's a couple of reasons why we believe in Watertown our per pupil spending is a little bit higher. We do have the Minuteman out of district tuition that we pay. We are very good about our class size guidelines, making sure that we maintain small classes. That certainly has a budget implication. We have an amazingly robust support staff when it comes to, you know, school counselors, guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists. So we have many layers to support our students. Our ratios are very low compared to the state. So I think that when we look at that per pupil spending, there's a lot more to that story than just simply comparing a district to another district. You have to look at the totality of what it is that we're trying to do. So, but it is important just to have a reference. As I mentioned earlier, we certainly depend on our grants. So this is just a snapshot. If you'll see that it's almost $3.6 million in grants this in FY19, and we anticipate that we'll have a similar level. There are some slight decreases in some of our grants that we know of. But it is, you know, important to know that our budget is based on not just the operating budget, but grants as well. And then this is just a summary of those offsets that we talked about, you know, when I mentioned that, you know, our $50 million budget, million dollar budget actually is a very large part of the bigger picture though. It's about $54 million, and these are the offsets that we use to cover the expenses of the school districts. So on April the 4th, I will certainly recommend to the school committee that you set the operating budget at $50,441,424 for fiscal year 2020. That's an increase of $2,401,973, which is a 5% increase. Then we will present, if that is successful from the school committee, we'll present that to the town manager. And then we will present that budget to the town council, the Budget and Fiscal Oversight Committee first, and then the town council. Generally, we go late May, but might be a little bit, who knows? So, and then the final approval for the budget is in June. So that's up and coming. And if you have any questions, you can find this presentation at, on the school committee's website, on the actual district's website. You can call us at any time and then email as well. So if there's any questions from the public or any questions, I can answer now. But please do reach out if there are questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation and just thank you Superintendent and Ms. Perkins for all the work that you've done in putting this budget together. I know every year it's a big task, and so we appreciate all the work that you've been doing since late last fall, really, to make this happen. So thank you. And then also again, add thanks to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, Kendra and Lindsay, who've done a lot of work in making this happen. So questions from the, the school committee? Any questions? One kind of minor correction at the very end. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. I think you, we only make one presentation to, the town council meets as a committee of the whole.
Right.
And we will make one presentation there. We don't do the, their budget fiscal oversight. That would be Vinnie. He's right over here. He's already here. He's hearing it right now.
I don't need it.
So we'll do that in, the date will be determined, but sometime in May typically.
We haven't set the dates yet.
Yes.
Right, right. You don't have the budget yet, so.
No, but we always, we have to be ahead of...
Right, 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 right. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Yep, Lindsay.
The only quick comment I had was that it's, it's really nice to be able to talk about a budget with 5% from the town and talk about decisions that relate to our goals and to have all of us hear a budget. And generally feel really happy with the kind of decisions that we get to make rather than having to make really hard ones, like taking things away from our students. And so thank you to the town and for everyone who worked on it.
Yep. Anyone else? I would certainly add to that.
You got to open it up for a public hearing now.
I will, I will.
I just have a quick thought, just as, because one of the big budget drivers is the world language teacher at the middle school. So I was just thinking in my head, I was, what year would the first year of those FLESS students be entering sixth grade? Would that be three years out from now?
It'll be three years from now, yes.
So that's probably something to really...
Third, next year, fourth, the following year, fifth, yes.
Think about and keep, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a big shift in how we deliver world language. Yep.
All right.
Definitely.
Exactly, it's an exciting shift.
Anything else? Other questions or comments? So again, we will, we'll have a meeting on Thursday. But, so as part of the public hearing, I'll open it up to the public to make any comments. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we don't have a vote here to take. We just, you know, again, appreciate the work that's been done. And we'll take our vote on Thursday. Gives us an opportunity to look at this, think about it a little bit more if there's any questions. at this, think about it a little bit more if there's any questions or issues that people come up with. We will be meeting on Thursday. There's a, a building committee meets at 6 o'clock on Thursday, so we're actually going to meet here in the council office at 5:45 prior to that meeting.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Two things. I certainly would just echo what Lindsay said. It's very amazing to be in Watertown and just to see that depth of commitment to our public education system here. The other thing is, if people go online and they click on the link, there's actually the full operating budget book with a lot of great detail that Heidi and her team put together. So this was just, we'll put the presentation up there as well, but actually, that budget book has a real deep dive into the budget that we're presenting.
Okay. All right. Thank you again. So let's move on to our action items. The first one is the Policy Subcommittee. We have a second reading on some of the policies that we looked at at our last meeting, which was the first reading. Now we have the second reading. I'll turn it over to the chair of that committee, Eileen Schubalzer. And I think we're going to hold one of them off to the side for the moment, but I'll let her take.
Right. We had the first reading of sections B, D, F, and G, and there were a lot of changes that we talked about for section B, and we haven't had a chance to get those going. We have a meeting this Friday of the Policy Subcommittee, so we're going to do the second reading of D, F, and G right now. We'll table section B for the next school committee meeting. Are there any additional comments on D, F, and G?
So I think that the proposal would be to go through each of them and note any changes that were made, and then we will vote.
We'll vote to accept them by section, and then eventually, one day in the hopefully not-too-distant future, they'll all be done, and we'll be able to vote on the entire handbook.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So section D. I don't want to go through each one, because I did that at the first reading. Is there any particular item that people still don't feel is right? Otherwise.
Do we want to flag anything that was changed, or is that going to be too complicated?
I think it'll be very complicated. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to look at this.
Yeah, Renee did that.
Yeah, the second round of changes is shown in blue.
Right, exactly. I'm going to take a moment to flip through this, section D. A lot of times, it was wording.
But D's relatively short.
Right.
Going to be holding DKC. There were some questions on that.
Sorry, can't hear you. D.
DKC.
DKC.
Sorry, Mr. J. Should have been recognized first.
Right. That is a business office decision.
There was going to be some new language erected on that.
I think what we can do is we can ask the business office to maybe provide that at the Policy Subcommittee meeting on Friday. Is that too soon?
I would recommend that.
Expense reimbursements.
So we don't tie this whole thing up. We just pass it without the DKC.
Right, okay.
Okay, so most of D, except for DKC, I would be looking for approval as it is now.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve section D with the exception of DKC.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, aye to have it. Thank you.
And F, take a look. Again, changes since the first reading, again, are in blue. This is also rather short. If no one has an objection to the way it is, who we.
I make a motion that we pass policy C. F, I'm sorry, F.
F.
I'm mixing up my alphabet.
It's easy to do in this process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye to have it. Thanks.
And streaking right along to section G. Again, take a look at the blue.
We were looking at GBEBB.
GBEBB.
So I would suggest we hold this one out as well.
Responsibility for supervision of classes. My understanding is part of this wanted to be checked with the union, so.
Oh, yes, and I think that Lilly and I were going to work on that together.
So pending that one item, GBEBB, can we.
We have one more. I think GFC, GCFB.
GCFD?
B.
B?
Yes.
Yes, the superintendent wants to speak to this one.
I would just like to say that there are only like 400 of these, but the one thing that I noticed when we went through this last time is GCFB was actually going to be replaced, and I do believe that our representative from MASC was going to replace that one.
Yes.
Right now, as it stands, it looks like we're just striking GCFB.
Yes, we're not, we haven't replaced.
We need to replace it, so I think that would be another one that we just need to hold.
So we're holding GCFB?
Yep.
Holding the striking of it.
Is everybody seeing the same thing that I am seeing?
Yeah.
It's striped without another one? Okay.
So for this one, we're waiting for the mask?
Yes.
Information?
Yeah, I think it just didn't get put in, honestly. So on Friday, we can resolve that.
Yes. So other than that, is there any other section of this, section G, that needs to be redone? Nope. Is there a motion, then?
I make a motion to approve policy section G with the exceptions that were just raised.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye to have it.
Okay, so the other item is, you'll see in your packets, there's a possible contract with MASK to host our policy handbook for two years. Is there standard contract for this? Are there any issues about this one?
Just one, just one comment, that there's one option on the first page where you can either password protect the document or leave it open to anybody who wants to. I assume we would leave it open.
Well, is it password protected to make changes, or is it password protected to read it? Because you want the general public to be able to access it for reading.
I think it's actually password protect to read it.
No, it's not. You can go on the MASC site, and that's how I did a lot of research with different policies to get ideas. You can see any of the policies once it's posted in order to make changes from the district.
You clearly don't want anybody at all to be able to change it who isn't designated by the school department.
Let's find out, because they could have just done password protected, not password protected.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I read it to be, it would be password protected in order to have access to even view it. I assume it would be password protected certainly to make changes to it. I mean, I can't imagine that you could, someone else can make changes.
I can tell.
And I would think most districts leave it open. I mean, why would they? That's the whole point.
Exactly. The whole point is to make it available to any member of the public who wants to see it.
I mean, at the beginning of that paragraph, it says, "The site may be password protected at the request of the school district with a username and password established and issued by MASC."
Why don't.
We can clarify.
Yeah, I want, I want, I think Dorothy Presser will come to the Policy Subcommittee meeting on Friday, so why don't we ask her that?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mark.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm a little concerned about spending $3,500 to host this, when we're hosting it on our website as well. I don't understand why this would be necessary, and I'd also like to find out how many other cities and towns are paying them to host their policy manuals. So I'm really uncomfortable at $3,500, and I just would like to, some clarification, because I know there's an additional fee of 900 for the second year, and then what happens after that, when this is all posted on our website as well? So if we can clarify that, or if somebody could answer that, I'd appreciate it.
It's a good question. I am wondering if someone, either the superintendent or the business office, would like to have any comments on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, I don't know the exact number of districts, but many districts do take advantage of the hosting. So if you go online, you'll see the very long list of people who host through MASC.
They didn't have time to do that.
The one, the one real advantage to this is you have, and I mean, try as we may, as you go through the years and you update policies, having the one authoritative source where you know that all the changes have gone through and are up to date is pretty nice. Meaning, when I came, I think there's a couple of different versions, I mean, I hate to say it, on the policy, every time I would pull a book out or I'd look online, there might be discrepancies between them, and with your policies, you don't want to do that. You want to make sure you have everything completely accurate. So that would be the, that's the one advantage that I could find.
I understand that, and I'm sorry, but I just have a concern that if we're updating a policy, we're going to update it on our website, we're going to update it with them. So we're duplicating efforts. I just, in my own mind, I can't see spending $3,500 plus another 900 for two years, and then who knows what it's going to be after that, when we have to have this, or we should have this, on our website updated. I mean, we're going through a massive, massive update at this point. I would think that it would be much easier going forward if we're going to update something, we're going to update it on our website as well. So I just can't, right this minute, I haven't been able to be convinced that this is a good use of 3,500 plus 900, and then who knows what it is after that. My own opinion. Thank you.
Let me, it's a good question. We can find out, try to get some more information. My assumption would be, in subsequent years, which we should find out, the fee would be closer to the 900. I mean, 3,500 is the gear up, you know, to put it in place, but we should find that out.
It also is stated, you can only put a certain number of pages, and the way we're going, we have another 170-something pages for the next one. I'm not sure. So I just, I'm a little bit hesitant at this point to support this, but I'm only one vote, so.
Okay.
I just wanted my, I wanted to express my opinion.
One other thing I think we should also investigate is what it would cost us to hire somebody to put all this online, because the initial setting it up on the web will cost us something.
Yeah. Two comments I would make also. One is that we wouldn't have it separately. I don't, my understanding of how this would work is that if we did this, we wouldn't, we wouldn't update our own version on our website. We would have simply, on our website would be a link that goes to theirs, and they would do all the updating. So we wouldn't, we would just send them, here's an update, you put it in there.
That wasn't clear in the documents that I read over the weekend.
Okay, and then the other, the other thing I did think that they added, which I thought was kind of nice, was, my understanding was they put in hyperlinks to Massachusetts General Laws, which actually, that's pretty, that's a nice thing to have. I mean, we, again, we could do that ourselves, I suppose, but they would do that as part of the process, so if someone's reading it, and then they would have a search engine, you know, a good search engine, then you could, you know. Some questions we need to get answered. Yeah.
I mean, the other concern that I have is that they are saying that our policy manual then becomes copyrighted to the MASC, and I find that very concerning. It actually goes pretty far into talking about that copyright issue. And it says, "The web-based manual, including exhibits and forms pursuant to this agreement, is the work product and the sole and exclusive property of MASC, subject to copyright by MASC."
Yeah.
And we are then granted a license to edit, copy, and use our own manual. I personally, especially given the amount of time that we have spent on this, giving up our intellectual property, in my opinion, to another group that is then going to claim it as their own, that we have to then pay for them to claim it as their own, also concerns me.
Okay.
So I think that we should be discussing that aspect of things, because while cost is one piece of it, so is the fact that we are basically now saying that this is then the property of another organization.
So will Dorothy be there on?
She hasn't said that she's not.
Okay, so you have some questions.
She agreed to the meeting date.
Yep, you have some questions for her.
Could we table this until we get some more information?
Certainly. This was not meant to be voted on. It was just, I think it's just for our information. This is our first look at this. I assume that there's also the possibility we could do it ourselves, hire somebody, put in all the links, et cetera, et cetera, so.
So let's look into it. Yeah, we don't have to vote on it right now. That's fine. I mean, it was, it was under that category, but we don't.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to do it anyway until we were totally done going through the whole process of approving the policy handbook, so now would not be an appropriate time anyway.
Okay, so we'll try to get some answers on those questions. All right. Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Don't thank her yet.
Friday at 3 o'clock for all those dying to do this with us.
All right, we'll come back. Yeah, we have another section that we'll come to in just a moment. Let me finish up the, a couple of other quick items here. We have the approval of gifts, and in our packets, we had a list of gifts. There were, again, Allison Donovan Memorial Donation. We had a series of those last time, and this time, I'm not going to read all the names, but there were, I counted them up. There were 32 people or organizations donating over $6,400 to that memorial, and we had some at the previous meeting as well. And then there are a series of others. I'll mention just briefly, outside of the Allison Donovan Memorial Donation, there's also the Watertown Charitable Council, a donation of $1,000. The Hosmer PTO, $52. The Hosmer PTO for the Mokley, for field trip, $752. United Electric Controls, scholarship, $500. Hosmer PTO for a field trip, $230. And then one last one, $200 from Lampasana and Bloomer Electrical Services for woodshop class donation. Is there a motion to approve the gifts?
Jo moved.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye to have it. Thank you. And then minutes, we have minutes from the school committee meeting, our last meeting of March 18th. Is there a motion to approve?
Jo moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye to have it. Thank you. Then we move down to reports, and the first item is the school calendar. So this is the, typically what we've done, this is school calendar for 2019, 20. We put it out at one meeting. People can ask questions. We would vote it at a subsequent meeting. So I think there may even be a few changes to what's in front of you right now, but I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, actually, and I will probably quickly turn it over to the assistant superintendent. But I would just like to say that, as always, this calendar is taken very seriously. We got a lot of feedback, and I would just ask Teresa to highlight some of the higher-level things that people might want to notice in the calendar.
Sure. So we work closely with union representation from, from our union and our principals. The, I think there's, it's very similar to last year's in that there are four early-release professional development half-days indicated by the blue with the line through them. One of the interesting things that we think was going to work out well is that we clumped the parent conferences more closely together in the past few years. They've been separated about, between three and four weeks, and. They've been separated about, between three and four weeks, and the teachers wanted to try giving, getting, getting feedback from their colleagues. They wanted to try having the parents come in the afternoon, have the opportunity to come in the afternoon and the evening on the same days. So, you'll see that indicated on there as well. The last day of school is, right now, June fifteenth, unless we have snow days. It goes up to June twenty-second. It's a long winter break, longer than general. It's five, six, eight school days of winter break, and students return and teachers return on January second. And the first day of school for students and teachers is September third after Labor Day, and I don't think there's anything else special about it, but I welcome, any questions?
Was the hundred and eightieth day?
Correct.
Right. June twenty-second would be the hundred and eighty-fifth day.
Are we going to mark that on the bottom?
Yeah, so, for planning, for planning purposes, we always tell families to target the twenty-second of June, which is the hundred and eighty-fifth day. That way, if you're planning vacations, or whatever it might be, you know, you don't end up on vacation when we're still in school.
Yes.
You know, for example, luckily this year, we think that the last, you'll have to vote the last day of school, but usually that happens after the thirty-first of March, so we're getting, I'll, I'll have that date for you soon. But, for example, this year, our, we end school on the, the seventeenth, where if we'd used the five days, I think it was the twenty-first that we would have been out, so.
Okay.
Half-day on a Monday.
Any other questions on the, on the school calendar, proposed school calendar? Yes, Lindsay?
So, in terms of the, I know the five snow days aren't, aren't listed on there yet, but in a heavy snow year, if we were to take more than five days, kids still need to be in school.
Yes.
Right, until up to June thirtieth. And so, I just, I've seen on a, a couple of local district calendars that they actually just identify, it's possible that you were in school until June thirtieth instead, and say with no snow days, it's too here. And so, I just wonder about the idea of saying to parents, well, you can plan to start camp in this, or vacation, wherever, on June twenty-second, if that is not necessarily going to be given high snow years. So, I'm, I'm just, it was just curious, this year was the first year, I've seen it on other district calendars, that they've kind of stopped identifying just five days as being the last day of school, so.
I think at one point, a number of years ago, we had something like that, where we would say something about June thirtieth, or something like last legal day, or some, because you can't go beyond June thirtieth, right?
Right.
I think we used to have some language on that.
I just think it might be misleading for some people. Yeah, I'm just thinking it could be misleading to say that school's definitely going to be done at this time, because if you have more than five snow days, you go to school longer, so.
Other question? Yeah, Kendra.
Two things. One is it's not, it's not written in there, usually it's written on the bottom. But I do, I, I would worry about putting June thirtieth, just because there's so much confusion about the last day of school regardless. I fielded a number of questions about when the last day of school is. So, maybe if there's, I, I'd like to, I'd like to say, like, this is the one hundred and eighty-fifth day. I like how that's written, but maybe put a little asterisk saying, with additional, like, it, it could go as late as, or as early as pending snow, something like that, just to clarify, but it's something I definitely get a lot of questions on.
Can, can I just ask a quick question, since we're talking snow days and school days? One of the EDCO roundtables, there was a discussion of blizzard backpacks from many districts that were going that route. Are we going to have a conversation around that, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it's, it's interesting, especially as we, with one-to-one computing, certainly middle school, high school, we would have the ability to do that, but we have not yet got put together a plan as to what that might look like. Yes.
I just want to appreciate that the conferences are closer together, and that's great, and also that they're later this year. I know it was an anomaly la- this, this past year, that they were early in March, and I know that was hard, so I just want to appreciate those two things. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the proposed cal- yeah, Eileen?
So, just talking about September, as you know, normally, school committee is the first Monday, the first Monday is Labor Day, then it's, the next Tuesday is the beginning of school, which is a horrible time to have a school committee meeting. Can we settle on what date that first school committee meeting of the year would be, so we can all plan accordingly?
Yeah, I mean, we, typically, we would go to the, the ninth.
Okay.
I think is what, although we didn't, we had some problems because of a diff- a holiday.
Yeah, but this year, Rosh Hashanah is on the thirtieth of September, and Yom Kippur is on the ninth of October, so I don't think that's going to be a problem for us. I just think it's helpful if we all know exactly what day that September school committee meeting is.
All right. Well, I could, we'll look at it and, and see if there's any
Okay.
particular issue around the ninth, and then, you know, we, we don't have the full year scheduled out yet, but usually we do that a little bit later point for the school committee meetings. Actually, it's not a bad idea, I suppose, to try to put them on this, but.
Or put them on a list, yeah.
We'd run out of space.
Okay.
We have another one that has just a list of all sites, so we could put on that.
We have an additional form that we're going to put on the website and distribute to parents with a listing, and so, we, and we also have report cards and things like that on it, so we certainly could put school committee members' meetings on there.
Okay, so maybe we'll, oftentimes, we haven't done that until, like, early summer, but maybe, let's try to do it earlier this time, so we can get it out. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, and we'll, we'll, we'll see this again at our, probably not the next April meeting, but the May meeting, most likely.
That might be, that might be good.
Yes.
Just, I mean, and, and just to remind the people in the public that school, you know, now is set starting on the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Right.
So, families should just prepare for school, always starting on the Tuesday after Labor Day, at least for right now.
Right. Yeah, that won't change.
Hopefully.
And, and when are you planning, you, you mentioned this, I missed it, when are you planning to decide the final, final, for the last day for this year?
So, the school committee, actually, you can, you could, probably the twenty-second would be the best day to vote that, but, you know, by, by law, yeah, unless you use the five snow days, you know, technically, you still have to make them up, even if we were to have some strange blizzard in April. But we can certainly vote, you know, and then we would have to amend that if we were to have to make up the date. By June first is when you're, you don't have to make anything up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, next is the, we're back to the policy subcommittee for a first reading on Section J. So, this is the one we didn't get to the other day.
There's always more policy. JB, equal educational opportunities, we're following the law. JBA, student-to-student harassment, bullying, this is actually now covered in JICFB, so we thought we would leave the definitions, but the actual dealing with it would go in that new section, JICFB. JBB, transgender and gender non-conforming students. We are taking out the old language. It's actually quite well-covered in the law. Also, JBB also referred to that. I want to thank Lily Reed, who did quite a bit of work on getting us the right information about this. JC, attendance areas, just changed the references. JCA, assignment of students to schools. Just cleaned up the references and the parts that we don't have to, have to decide, we just wanted to lead, leave it open, so that the administration can make up its own mind, depending on the circumstances, and we don't have to change the policy. JCAA, we pretty much left it alone, school closings. JEB, entrance age requirements, and we took out the word kindergarten, because obviously we have a preschool that also is involved. Initially, when this was written, there were some students who were caught unawares, and we wanted to give people time, but now, everybody knows what our policy is. So, that's all.
Pardon?
Where's, where's the typo? I'm sorry, I can't.
It's in the second paragraph, there's just, it needed another L on the will.
Oh, okay.
The third line, to the typo, I think it should be, they changed it to "they reach", rather than "reaches".
Did you, Renee, did you get that? Because Renee's the one who very kindly does this. JABA, pre-kindergarten entrance requirements, it's pretty clear. JEBB, maximum age of enrollment, that's covered by state law. JF, school admissions, we changed it to be in accordance with law. JFAB.
Just, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
JF, there's just a, I think a typo.
Where?
Second paragraph at the very end, proof of residency and of legal guardianship are required, plural? Shouldn't that be plural?
Sure. Change is to are. All right. JFAB, non-resident students. Does it look at D and E, almost identical? I think we accepted this. Other members of the committee can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we accepted this with the changes here.
Which, which one are you talking about?
JFAB.
Oh, okay.
Non-resident students. That note about hold seven eighteen was for our subcommittee.
Okay.
Where's the typo? Oh, yeah. Did you get that, Renee? Conditions for exclusion, when you turn over the page, for whom an exception has been made.
Right.
Thank goodness for Renee. JFABB, admission of foreign exchange students.
So, just, I'll, I'll look into this one a little bit. I, I know that, and Eileen, you remember this, and maybe Mark does, I mean, I think, I don't know, four or five years ago, we had a lot of discussion about this, and I don't remember exactly kind of all the things that we changed, but there were several examples that came up at that time that, that raised some issues here, and the one that I want to look into just a little bit is the, the legal guardian.
Right, that's part of it, and there are also other issues, like healthcare, and suppose somebody has an accident or something, who's responsible?
Right.
Because it actually turns out that the host family is not necessarily responsible. And also, for discipline purposes, you know, normally, a student in our schools is subject to the discipline of our administration, but there are, it's a kind of a gray area. On the other hand, it's a wonderful thing to have an exchange student come and cross-pollinate the atmosphere of the high school, so this is what we settled on. If you want to look into it and come back to it at the second reading, that'd be fine.
Yeah, the, the, the issue around legal guardian, I, certainly someone, there has to be an adult here in, in the community takes responsibility.
Right, and it turns out that the host families do not take legal guardianship, so.
That's a, it's kind of established programs?
Yeah, they, they don't. So, the question is, is, does anybody, and if there is no legal guardian, can we accept them?
Right.
Yeah.
I think one issue that comes up, and that someone was describing to me, was where if someone takes, if some, a host family here takes legal guardianship, then the, the parents have to, in some fashion, give up parental rights.
That's right.
And so, that raises some issues
Yes.
in that context, and so.
Yes.
You know, I, I just wonder in part whether there are, whether there's a, a legal standing that would be appropriate, other than legal guardianship, that still has responsibility, but doesn't require parents to give up kind of parental rights. That's the kind of issue I want to just look into a little bit, and maybe.
I mean, we can, in our policy, require that some adult who's a member of the community be a legal guardian. That may result in our being unable to accept almost anyone from any of these programs, but would satisfy our requirements, so that's the, that's where the cross of the issue is.
I would say we leave this out and let the subcommittee have
Yeah.
a, a discussion to clarify.
Sure.
That's when their meeting, next.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, well, I just raising it to say, I'll, I'll look into it myself a little bit.
I, I just have a concern that if we do that, if we continue, if we keep this legal, if, if our policy is, you have to have a legal guardian, then nobody's going to come, yeah? More than likely. So, we're closing the door to.
Right, so we have to decide which principle's more important to us.
Right. So, I think we can, I should be clarified.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, so JFABB, are you going to look into it?
I'll look into it, I mean, if you guys want to as well, that's fine, but I'll, I'll look into it a little bit.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do some research on our end as well.
Okay.
JFABC, which is admission of transfer students, this is a new one for us. Homeless students enrollment rights and services, JFABD. JFABE, educational opportunities for military children, this is new for us. JFABF, education opportunities for children in foster care, it's new to us. JFBB, school choice, it's the law, how, this is how it works, we've already voted this year. Yeah?
This isn't a, a major thing. I, I thought it just kind of odd, the way it was phrased here. This is JFBB, right?
Right, school choice. Which phrase?
I mean, it, it just seems odd to me that we, we say that the policy is not to admit non-resident students. I mean, that's, that's the decision that we've made every year, but it seems strange to me to, that we put that as a policy, that we're not going to do that.
Because we could vote to do it.
We could vote to do it, and that would be contrary to our policy. I mean, it seems to me that.
It's an opt-in instead of an opt-out, is what it is.
Right.
So, it means you consciously have to make this decision every year.
Right. But, so, what, it seems to me, the policy in a policy manual would be to do the review every year. That's what we're.
And vote.
That's.
And vote. That's what we're required to do. And if we choose to, in, in some year, if we choose to, to opt-in, well, we can opt-in, but if we do that, we, we violated our policy, which, this kind of policy pre, it just precludes the decision-making.
No, because it says, "In the event the school committee votes to participate, the following local conditions would apply." This, this is not precluding you from voting to opt-in to school choice, but it says you must actively make that decision every year.
Right.
The first sentence doesn't say that, though.
The first sentence, the first sentence, it assumes, or it states that the policy is to not, is to not opt-in, and then it says, "Well, but you may, you may opt-in, you may choose to opt-in, but the policy is to."
The current, so currently, if someone comes and says, "I live in Brighton, and I'm going to go to the Watertown Public Schools," we, our current policy is, they can't.
Oh, I see, because we voted it, so we could be, if we voted it, we would have to vote it, vote it, vote, vote that, and then vote a change to the policy.
Right.
I get it.
But currently, we don't allow it.
Right.
That is simply stating what our current policy is.
I totally understand. Okay. We'd have to do two votes if we were going to change it.
Right.
Ah, okay, well, I guess we could look at it that, I hadn't looked at it that way.
Yeah, no, just so, yeah.
But we, I, I guess we could do that, but we would have to be aware that, in fact, that's what we would have to do, if we wanted to opt-in.
Yeah.
We would have to change our policy as well.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. JFBB. JG, placement of students. J G, placement of students. We seem to have eliminated J H, which is quite lengthy, because these are things that should, that's about student absences and excuses and all those things. We put them in our student handbooks, and it may be different for every school, and we let the school administration decide these things. J H is, so the new one, basically, it has some of the guidelines, but it says, this added sentence is important, detailed information can be found in the student handbooks, because that's where we make those changes. J H D, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. We've rewritten that. J I, student rights and responsibilities. J I B, student involvement in decision-making.
This is interesting, I.
Yeah?
We've never done this. Does the law really say this?
If it's, yeah, I assume it does.
We've never.
Well.
The student advisory committee, meeting with at least once every month, with this composed of five students.
That's the student government that I'd like you guys to go visit.
Student government, and also there are students on the site councils, and also we have students who come here at, to every meeting, and some of the student advisors have, in fact, done more than told us about activities, they've taken a more active role. Plus, I believe it states that you need to welcome students to committees, committee meetings, and they get to speak equal to, they have equal standing to speak with any other member of the general public, so you can't say, no, you can't speak because you're a student.
Right, the last sentence on that paragraph says, the chair of the student advisory committee will be an ex officio, non-voting member of the school committee, without the right to attend executive sessions, et cetera, which is an interesting comment. We haven't done that, where we've actually had somebody sitting at the school committee. When John Brackett was here, he actually mentioned that to me, and said, you guys should look into that. I think he's been at school, I don't know whether they did that in Billerica.
Absolutely, with two.
Yeah, two?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, to me, this is a whole topic here for a retreat, at some point, to talk about, are there ways that we can incorporate students in more? I think what we do is probably, you know, kind of meets the spirit of what they're trying to say here, but clearly there's different ways that it could be done, and so maybe we need to think more about how we want to do that, in terms of engaging students more in the process.
So I think one way to, well, I would want to involve the principal of the high school in these kinds of discussions, but I think the current student advisors already have that title, but I don't think they're necessarily associated with the student council, so this would be something that the high school could discuss and come to us with a plan for.
They could, but I think we need to think about it as well. I mean, you know, like Dr. Golston said, I guess in Billerica, you had two students who sat at the table as non-voting members.
If they come to us with that plan, and they think that students would be interested in sitting here for the meetings, you know, then we could consider it. I don't think that this is something that should start with us, I think it should start with the high school. Let them have these discussions and come up with a plan, that's just my opinion, of what they think would be appropriate, fitting both the spirit of the law and with what they think would be helpful for them and their students.
That's fine, I mean, I think we can have conversations on both ends, but that's fine. I'm not proposing any changes to the.
To this policy, okay.
Not proposing changes, just pointing out that it's something I think for us to think about, as well as the high school.
One of the things that comes up when we're doing all this policy review is you find that in a number of cases, you haven't been exactly following.
Right.
The law or the policy, so this is a good reminder.
Yep.
Okay, J I C, student conduct, there's a whole section that's been substituted for that, called student discipline. J I C A, student dress code. As determined by requirements in the student school handbooks. G I C C, which also is E E A E C, student conduct on school buses. J I C E, student publications, have been changed to student-produced media, because they, they're not just printed publications these days. J I C F, gang activity slash secret societies. J I C F A, prohibition of hazing, definitely covered by the law, as well as by this policy. J I C F A dash E, hazing. J I C F B, bullying prevention, this is new for Watertown, and covers things we hadn't previously covered, like cyberbullying. J I C H, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. J I C I, possession of illegal weapons, we got rid of it because it's now covered by J I C. J I E, pregnant students, is now changed to pregnant and postpartum students. And the idea is to try to keep pregnant students in school as much as possible, and to provide services for them, tutoring services for them, so that they do not fall behind.
I have a question about that?
Sure.
This is actually not so much a policy change, but a question. We added the sentence, after giving birth, the student is eligible to return immediately or can access up to eight weeks of tutoring, is that provided by the district?
Yes.
Yes, and it's the law, it's the law.
I mean, we could.
Home and hospital tutoring, it follows the same thing, if you're out for 14 or more days in a school year, you get tutoring, so.
Okay. We don't need to say that, it's under the law? Okay.
J I H, searches and interrogations. Another new one, J I I, student complaints and grievances. J J and J J I, extracurricular activities. J J A, student organizations. Although we said, we have that section about hazing previous, we thought it was important to repeat that language also, as part of the student organization policy. J J E, fundraising by student groups, has been changed to student fundraising activities. So we want to make sure that there are not a lot of people going off in different directions, unsupervised, that we don't know about, who are fundraising for student activities. J J F, student activity accounts, it says, hold Heidi will go over. And I believe you did. And this is the result. This is the result. J J G, sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, just about the student activity counts.
Right.
So I guess this is on.
If you flip through, there's even more of J J F.
J J F, I think we need to circle back to, because number three, we don't have principal checking accounts, so I think we did talk about it, but I'm not sure if it's quite.
Number three, which, number three?
It's under the page three oh three.
Yeah, but there are three different number threes.
Oh, sorry.
Is it the first page of J J F?
On P three oh three.
Okay.
And number three.
Well, does it require it, or, it says it authorizes it? Is that something we don't want to authorize?
We don't authorize checking accounts used by the principal.
Okay, well then. Okay, it says here that it's in compliance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, so we can choose not to do it, but we are permitted by law to do it, right?
Yes, the law does allow for principal check books, but everybody's been getting away from that, and it's, it's good that Watertown did get away from that years ago.
Okay, so.
Much more difficult to have oversight.
Right, okay, so, do you want to think about this and maybe have something for Friday's policy subcommittee meeting? Okay, so we're holding out J J F, we're going to.
So, I mean, there's two J J Fs?
It's all the same, it's just, they're printed in different printing because different people produce things, but it's, it's a combination of the law and our own policies.
We can review both of those.
Are there parts of it that you?
Well, I just, a question, I guess, they kind of overlap, and so I'm trying to, was trying to.
Well, they overlap because they're both on the same subject, and it's all one policy.
And they're going to go, they're going to look at this again anyway.
We'll look at J J F and.
Okay, okay. What's not clear to me is kind of what happens to these accounts, I don't, it's confusing.
Yep.
What happens to them.
What do you mean, what happens to them?
Well, like, they get closed out, and it's not clear where they go. But maybe that's clear.
We will report back to you.
Yep, let's clarify.
Contest for students, J J G. J J H is student travel, we had an example today. J J H dash E, out-of-state, out-of-country, or in-state overnight field trips. I think we're all pretty familiar with this, because we give permission. J J H dash R, student travel regulations.
Is, just a minor question here, in the very first sentence on the transportation, it says the use of vans or private automobiles.
For trips planned to include late-night or overnight student travel.
Our goal is not to use the vans for out-of-state or overnight travel, I think that was the meaning.
The vehicles we're buying are not vans.
Right.
Buses.
Yep.
So is that, that's our vans? The school department, or it doesn't matter, any van?
This is not for, so I just want to be clear what the wording seems to mean. It's not that you're going somewhere and then you're staying over, it's that you're actually traveling during the nighttime hours. So when you are traveling during the nighttime hours, you want commercial motor coaches.
Is that right?
Yeah, if you look at the, under transportation. It's to protect from having tired, private drivers.
Yeah, it seems like it should, it should just say that late-night or overnight trips must use commercial motor coaches, and that's it, you know, for the drivers, so that, it's just the, I agree, like, the way it says the first round, it kind of makes it sound like what kind of vehicle it is, but really it's just that you have to hire someone to drive if it's late or overnight driving.
Who's subject, obviously, to state laws. So if you'd like, we can eliminate the first sentence, and that very first sentence can just say, late-night or overnight trips will or must, whichever you prefer, use commercial motor coaches.
So that means you can't use the vans that we're leasing?
I think we said that they couldn't take them overnight.
I don't think you can, under this, because they won't be driven by commercial drivers. It has to be a commercial motor coach.
Pardon?
I don't want our vans, I honestly, I think our vans are for day trips, that's what we.
You don't want a tired parent or teacher driving it?
I mean, if they're coming back at nine, they were 10 o'clock at night.
Okay.
Is that, is that a violation?
I don't know, we could maybe be more specific about what late night means.
That's fine.
Maybe 10 o'clock, we'll talk about it on Friday.
Okay, but I'm going to suggest that we eliminate this first sentence, and then we talk about what's remaining, all right? Okay, that's J J H dash R. The whole idea of this is to protect the physical safety of our students. J J I B, interscholastic athletics, that is also new for us. J J I C, slash J J J, student eligibility requirements for participation in interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. J J I C A, A therefore crossed out. J J I C B, participation of non-public school students in activities sponsored by the Watertown Public Schools. J J I F, the concussions, law's been changed to athletic concussion policy. Legal references. J J I F dash R, more, what is a concussion, et cetera, policies that you have to follow.
Seems to me this is an example, if we start running into page issues, I mean, this is like 10 pages long, I don't.
You could reference it.
You could reference it rather than have it in the policy manual, if you need it to, it seems.
So is that your suggestion to not have it here? Our thought was that parent, this is something parents would look up.
Yeah, I think we have it also, in fact, the concussion policy, I mean, if you go online to register.
That's fine.
Howling athletics, you have to, actually have to go to the concussion policy. I don't think it's here, and it's like separated out, it's not, it doesn't pull out of the policy manual. It's something to look at, I mean, it's just, it's very, lots of detail.
Well, we can't, these are the regulations, before, the section before was the policy, so we can add a sentence to the policy one, the J J I F saying, link to athletic concussion regulations.
The regulations be in the athletic handbook?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so, should we do that? Just link it?
If the concussion protocols change, then they.
Right.
They change, but we don't have to change it in the policy manual.
Right, okay, so just link to regulations. Another policy that's new, J K, student conduct.
So, just a language question here?
Yes.
It's twice in this policy, I don't know why it says it this way. Massachusetts general laws require the Watertown School Committee to adopt written policies, rules, and regulations not inconsistent with. Why don't we just say consistent with? Consistent with, rather than a double negative.
Obfuscated.
Assistent with the law.
And then in the next paragraph, the third line, it's the same thing, has a double negative, not inconsistent, we just say consistent with.
With the law, and not in conflict with school committee policy? What do you want to do about that, the tag end of that sentence?
Or.
See what I mean?
Consistent with the law.
Consistent with the law.
Or.
And not in conflict with school committee policy? Is that how you'd like to do it?
Where are you at?
That same sentence.
At the end of it?
In order to do this, each school staff in the district shall develop specific rules, consistent with the law, and not in conflict with school committee policy?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Okay. J K A, we've decided to outru, to outlaw corporal punishment. So if you will see that, we're specifically prohibiting it. J K A A, Physical Restraint of Students, this is subject to the, to the law, very specific. J K D slash J K E, Suspension and Exclusion. I think this is also primarily referring to special needs children, but it's also very much subject to specific law.
It's also referenced in the, the new, I think it's J I C, the Student Discipline.
We just wanted to be very clear about it. J L, Student Welfare. Kind of a grab bag of things, fire drills, child abuse, student safety.
Just on J K F, I'm sorry.
J K F.
Just, um, second, third paragraph, both reference to the Board of Education, should be Board of Elementary and Secondary Education?
I don't know, I'm taking a, I'm looking at.
All right, number two.
In the, in number two.
I'm looking at Kathy, is that right?
And then number three, it just refers to Board of Education, small letters, I, I, I think they mean their, the State Board, don't they? Isn't that the reference there? In number three? So that should be the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education?
Is that it? Massachusetts Board of Secondary.
Elementary and Secondary.
Elementary.
Department, well, no, it's the Board, the Board actually does the, yep.
And Secondary. Education, okay? Student Welfare, J L, so it was that grab bag, J L A, Student Insurance Program. J L C, Student Health Services and Requirements, has been changed to Student Health Services and Requirements and. We're pretty specific, new one for Watertown, J L C A, Physical Examinations of Students. J L C B, Immunization of Students. J L C C, Communicable Diseases. J L C D, we've had quite a few several conversations about administering medicines to students. J L D, new one, Guidance Program. J M, Approval of Scholarships.
A question on that one.
Yes?
The first line refers to award a scholarship to a graduating senior, must secure a principal approval. But they give scholarships to not just seniors.
Yes, that's right.
So.
Yeah, so, like the Rensselaer homes goes to a junior.
I would just strike out graduating senior, just say a scholarship.
To a student.
To a stu, yeah, okay, student must secure, yeah.
Okay. J M A, Awards for Championship Athletic Teams or Athletes. J P, Student Gifts and Solicitations, has been changed.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This, the language in J M A about, will receive an allocation.
J M A awards, okay.
Receive an allocation of fifty, up to $50 per student for the purchase of awards. I think we, we talked at one point in Athletic Subcommittee of striking that language. Just, it was dated and unnecessary, I, I, I don't remember the conversation in detail, but I don't know if that's necessary language.
I can only speak to, I believe, the intent of this, which was that to, uh, while you want to reward and, and recognize outstanding athletes, you don't want to create a situation in which, you know, people have decided to buy $300 jackets for each person on the school budget.
Okay, I just, I, yeah, I, I, I don't remember the conversation, it was a couple of years ago. I wonder if Ryan has any, the Athletic Director has any thoughts on language? I don't know, I just feel, it feels strange to put a dollar amount in, but I, I understand what you're saying, so.
Uh, J P, Student Gifts and.
I mean, I think this is what we changed, anyway, sorry, we can, I'll look at the, from last year.
It's fine.
J P, Student Gifts and Solicitations, this is, um, something which sometimes parents don't realize. It actually means you're discouraged from giving gifts to your teachers and other school personnel. Uh, often a letter would be really well appreciated by the staff. And the, sorry. Well, I just, I, I think it wouldn't be bad to have this be part of the thing that parents sign off on, in the fall, so that everybody understands. It's also, uh, organizations wishing to distribute flyers or other materials to students in connection with fund drives have to get the permission of the superintendent. I'm not sure that always happens.
For the most part, yep, I sign things and don't sign things, depending.
Okay, but I think it's important to point that out to everybody every year.
So is that like a, the P T O?
Yes. Any organization, it says.
Can I ask you a question about this one?
Sure.
Is, is this a spot, since it is a, like you said, a place where people may, may look to also just have language about the actual laws about limits to gifts you can, that teachers can accept, I mean, it's like, it's, I just, I mean, we kind of referenced lots of other laws in here and if people are gonna look up that kind of a policy, might be a spot, like there is like a, under $50 a year that a teacher is even allowed to accept as part of a conflict of interest law. And so I'm just not sure if that's something that belongs here, if we just want to let it go, but it just seems like it links up directly to this policy.
Well, the other thing people don't understand is it's cumulative through the year, so you might, yeah, you might give a $10 gift and then another $20 gift and then another $30 gift, you're over the limit right there.
Right, it just seems like this is a spot where like a one or two lines about that, that law might be a good reminder for people.
We can add it. Okay, J Q, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges, has been rewritten. Covers books, materials, supplies, and equipment, so that means that also uncovers the computer equipment, et cetera. J R A, Student Records, has now been changed to J R A dash R. J R D, Student Photographs. That's it.
Thank you.
I know you're wishing that this could go on, but I'm sorry, I'm finished.
It's riveting.
I mean, it's, it's exciting, you never know quite what is gonna turn up, right?
Committee meeting, 3:00 this Friday in the Phillips School, and you can do more of this.
Great, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Eileen, thanks to the committee, so we will revisit Section J, uh, with a second reading. Great, thank you. Building for the Future, Elementary Schools Project, Mark.
I don't have much to add, since we haven't met since our last meeting, but we are meeting and it's listed later on Thursday evening at 6:00 here in this room.
All right, thank you very much, High School.
Excellent, so at, at this point in time, the Owners Project Manager Selection Team has met with several of the responders, the respondents to the R F S that went out for the O P M and we've conducted our interviews and we're looking forward to hopefully making an announcement on Thursday as to who the O P M, the recommended O P M might be, so that's where we're at with that.
Maybe you could do just a word here, because I, I actually had an email from someone the other day and they were confused because there were two O P M things going on at the same time, do you want to explain that a little bit?
Sure, just briefly, the, generally, the Owners Project Manager Request for Services is done in two parts. The first part is for the feasibility study or the conceptual design and schematic design.
I think they were confused because we have the high school and the middle, and the elementary at the same time.
Okay.
That, that's, that's the point.
So we have two different, well, one project bundles three buildings together, the elementary school project, so that would have its, its own unique designer and its, and its own Owners Project Manager, because that's one project, whereas we are then beginning to embark on a second project, which is independent and is run through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So, our O P M selection process and designer selection really goes through a, a process through the M S B A, so that's why we have two different R F Ss that were out there for that. It doesn't necessarily mean that you might not end up with the same O P M or the same designers, but certainly there are two different processes that you go through.
Yeah, so.
And two different parts, so.
Okay, thank you, just for that clarification. Questions on the Building for the Future, any questions? If, if people can make it on Thursday, you know, we have a, a, the committee will meet, I know, Eileen, you already have a conflict, but, but the committee will, the school committee will meet briefly and then the building committee will meet, and I think that the, my understanding is that the architect will be providing a pretty good update on the, particularly the two new buildings, the Conif and the Hosmer, so it'll be interesting.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, okay.
Also, just as the Cable Board Representative, I want to remind people, the building committee meetings are on cable, so you don't have to physically be here to find out what's going on.
Okay, good point, thank you. Next would be Enrollment, Dr. Galston?
Nothing too dramatic to change in terms of our enrollment, I think we're riding the rest of the year out well and, you know, our, we have a little bit of an increase in our student population to middle school, but that isn't something that's impacting too much in terms of needing to create new sections or whatever it might be, so.
Okay, any questions on enrollment? None, okay. Warrants, you have a list of the warrants that have been signed off, any questions on that? Nope. Personnel? We also have a list of personnel changes? Any, any questions on those? Okay, moving to, to final report, School Committee Chair, I don't have a report this evening. Dr. Galston, do you have a report?
Very brief.
Okay.
Just want to let the community know that we are in the process of hiring a new Hosmer principal. We have a screening committee that met, it was comprised of parents, teachers, school administration, and school committee member to review applicants and they put forth three finalists. We will be actually hosting those three finalists in our district beginning tomorrow, so Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And there are many opportunities for parents, community members to interact with the candidates. Probably the most open one is between 3:15 and 4:00 on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, where anybody can come in and meet the candidates and ask questions and get to know them. And then I'll hold the public interviews from 4:30 to 5:30, which is an opportunity to not interact with the candidates, but certainly see them interacting with me and listen to their presentations. And at the end of that, we'll be asking for feedback from anybody who attends, so that's an exciting moment for us at the Hosmer. The Anti-Bias Coalition, we are moving right along. I do want to invite anybody who's interested in being part of the Anti-Bias Coalition to our next meeting, which is on April 29th at 5:30 PM in the Phillips Administration Building. We are very excited to make the group even stronger by inviting more members. One of the key things we're doing is planning for a community convening that we're planning on holding on October the 3rd of next year, so anybody who's interested in being part of that, please come to that meeting. Two other, just read quick announcements, on April the 4th, unfortunately, it's a little bit of a conflict between the School Building Committee, but the Watertown Middle School P T O is hosting a documentary, Angst, which is geared towards students and parents in terms of trying to navigate the waters of growing up. We know that anxiety is, is prevalent in our students and so this is an opportunity to have a, see a movie as well as have an open conversation with a panel regarding student anxiety. It's actually being shown as well for students during the day, so it's, both parents and students will have an opportunity to see the movie. And then we're also hosting on May 13th, an evening for parents who are concerned about vaping. That is something that is certainly a concern for all of our youth right now and we want to make sure that parents have as much information as possible to help prevent or delay any students vaping, which is, again, very serious. So those are my announcements.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I'm gonna sneak back to my chair report just to, to, to thank Amy for doing the spelling bee. Which is, how many years in a row you've done this? Too many, a lot. It was great, it was on Sunday after, from, from 9 till about, what, 3 or so?
Later, later.
Three or four. Yeah, we had some word callers here, so that, we're working on their spelling. But I just, it was a great, a great event that's been going on for a number of years and I want to thank, for the elementary grades and just want to thank Amy for all the work that she's done with it. Yeah, any?
I do want to point out too, that it was not just parents, it wa, there were a fair number of staff members who gave up part of their Sunday to come and participate and support and I thought that was really fantastic and the kids really liked seeing their teachers out of school.
Yeah. One other event, I might mention, we, several of us were at the Art Show, which is over at the, at the, at the Watertown Mall, Annual Art Extravaganza, and that's up for, what, three weeks? Two weeks? Two and a half to three weeks, so go over there and, and see all the great artist, artistic work by the, from, really from, what, second grade all the way through high school or third grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, through high school, okay. Any new business? New business? Announcements?
Actually, I do have, I just have a question, I should have asked it back. Can we just confirm the last day of this year, because there's been a lot of questions, whether it's a half a day, a full day? Is it the Monday?
It's half a day on Monday, the 17th of June. Unless something were to happen and we were to have to have a day off, so we would have to revisit that. But right now, it is definitely the 17th of June, half day on a Monday.
Other announcement, School Building Committee, as Mark said, this Thursday, 6 to 8 PM here. School Committee will meet just before that, at 5:45 in the room adjacent. The Policy Subcommittee, as Eileen mentions, is meeting from 3 to 4:30 on April 5th on Friday. School Vacation Week, April 15th to the 19th. School Committee will be meeting April 22nd in this chamber from 7 to 9. Any other announcements? Nope. Public Forum? No? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed, I just have it, thank you.